We'll guide this board as we convene and legislate and optimize the resources of this great county. We ask for your help to give our collective gifts to our communities, to give ourselves in ways that make a positive difference to our families, to our towns, and to the 46,000 residents of which we represent. We pray that those engaged in health and human services will strive to ensure that the physical, mental, and emotional health of every person is maintained. We pray for others, that they will be led to understand that there is no better investment than in our children, our most cherished resource. We pray for the men and women enlisted to protect our way of life, our service people, our law enforcement persons, our required emergency personnel, and we pray that they will return safely home to their families. We ask the Lord that you be with your dedicated servant and follower, Gene Pickford, and please be with his family and friends. We are all better people for knowing the kindness and caring person for which he represented. Thank you for the years of knowing him, and may we be led by his example. We now leave this prayer with his meaningful and committed ending. God bless, and we add amen.
Amen.
Please join me in flagging our flag. Flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of last meeting's minutes. It was for the public hearing as well as our regular meeting of May 26th. Were there any additions or corrections from the board? If not, they'll stand as submitted. Communications?
All communications have been referred to the appropriate committees.
I'll grant privilege of the floor to Mr. Taggart.
Yes, I'd like to... Can you get Manuel? He's in the... He's going to do the presentation today. Kent on there? There he is.
Hi Kent.
Oh Kent.
Kent, can you hear me?
Can you speak up, Kent?
Wait a minute Kent, we can't hear you.
So today, privilege of the floor, we have two speakers from Ampean Renewable Energy, Taro and Karina, and if they're ready, I'll turn it over to them. They're going to talk to you guys about community solar campaigns in your communities.
Great, yeah, we're ready, and thank you all so much for having us, we really appreciate it. I'm going to try to share my screen, and hopefully we don't have any tough technical difficulties on our end. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
I can, Karina.
You can. How about the board room? I think that's the most important.
Can you guys see that over there?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, and you're able to hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. So my name is Karina Ricard, I'm here with Taro Gold. We are here, as Kent said, from Ampean Renewable Energy. We're going to tell you, we'll try to keep it brief, tell you why we're here and what we are proposing to Delaware County and its municipalities. I have an agenda here. This first part is what we're going to go through in our time this afternoon, and the second part, in an effort to keep things short, we've included more information so that you can hopefully receive this slide deck and go through it on your own time. Just more information, more detailed information, and answers to questions that might arise during or after the presentation. So Taro, start us off.
Yeah, hi again everyone, my name's Taro Gold, and I'm our Director of Sales and Outreach, and specifically, we want to talk to you about Ampean's role in community solar. Many of you might be familiar with community solar, and Ampean, we really see ourselves as a conduit and this facilitator of New York's community solar program, specifically connecting municipalities to community solar farms, and facilitating everything that has to go on with the connection with utilities and customers, being municipalities themselves, or your residents, their households, and even some businesses too. And we've really built the capabilities as a platform to connect all these parties together, and we've done that for several towns throughout New York, kind of riding the coattails of NYSERDA's Clean Energy Community Program as well, and we'll get into some of those specifics. That is really our role though, a central one in the success of New York's community solar program. So that's kind of our intro, and we'll jump over to kind of how community solar works as a hopefully refresher for many, but if it's new, it's certainly worth going over. Karina, I'll pass it to you.
Yeah, so community solar, it was adopted by New York State a number of years ago, about six years ago, as a way for the state itself to reach its own renewable energy goals. And so, over the course of the past six years, a number of many solar farms have been developed in the state. I'm sure you've encountered some of them, especially being, you know, in the upstate, kind of more rural area that you're in. And so, essentially how this program works is it makes solar accessible to folks that wouldn't otherwise be able to access the benefits of solar. So these farms are built, they don't have to be in your county, they don't have to be in your town, they just have to be within your utility territory, which is quite large being NYSAG. So both residents and businesses can sign up, it's free of charge to enroll. When a resident or business signs up, what happens is we take a look, we, Ampean, take a look at your historical electricity usage. So over the past 12 months, we assign you a portion of the solar farm to correspond with your usage history. The electricity is generated by the solar panels in the solar farm, it goes right onto the utility grid, just like any other electricity production source would. These farms act as mini solar, mini power plants for the utility. And then, because this resident or business has become a member of the solar farm, the utility takes the electricity that's generated and turns it into monetary credits on your utility bill, so it reduces the amount that you owe to the utility. It's a guaranteed savings product, and that savings is an incentive that was built into this program to boost participation. So what we're really here to talk about is community campaign, and this is a term really coined by NYSERDA. As you may know, they released a new round of funding through their Clean Energy Communities Initiative, and a community campaign is one of the action items that a municipality can take to both earn grant money and earn points toward larger pools of grant money. And so, just to kind of give an overview of why you would want to participate in a community campaign, right? These campaigns empower your residents to save money, right? This is an educational campaign to speak to your residents about the fact that this program exists and the benefits of enrolling in it. And additionally, for each new approved household, right, that resident, that household will earn a $100 Visa gift card from Ampean that they can then reinvest or spend in their local community. The second reason to participate is the municipality itself will earn donations from Ampean. So for every new approved enrollment, Ampean will donate $100 to a fund of the municipality's choosing, and that fund is determined ahead of time, but it can be really for whatever municipality wants it to be for. And then, thirdly, you can earn a NYSERDA $5,000 grant for running a community campaign. There is a little bit of documentation to get approved, and Ampean is here to help with that documentation. We've worked with a number of municipalities and gotten their document submitted and approved for this $5,000 grant. And this is just a summary of how a community campaign would work. It's really quite simple, and Ampean does a lot of the legwork, because we've done this so many times before, and we truly understand that local municipal governments don't have a lot of bandwidth to be taking on extra projects, and so we step in to work with you to tailor this campaign to your community, and really take a lot of the legwork, work off of your plate. These campaigns can be run either/or at the county level, or at the municipality level, or both at the same time. And so what I understand from the last time we presented to Delaware County is that the county wants to give the municipalities kind of the first right of refusal to take on this participation, and if there are municipalities that don't want to run a campaign or participate, the county itself is considering running its own campaign to fill in the gaps. So it starts by raising awareness. We work with you to create an email template to send out to your residents. We create a landing page for your municipality, so that's where your residents will go to enroll, so that you get the credit. We will create a postcard mailer for your residents, we'll create the language together, we'll include your town seal, et cetera. And the last bullet point there under awareness is that we absolutely tailor this to meet your community's needs. So you, as the supervisors, know the best way to reach your residents, and we will certainly work with you to make sure that we're kind of doing the best outreach that we can for your community's needs. The second component, right, is education. So the awareness has kind of been broadened, people understand that this is a campaign that their local municipality is running, but they don't totally yet understand what it's about. And that's why Ampean can lead informational Zoom meetings, just like this, for your residents to join, ask questions, we will certainly answer all of them, and we can lead as many of those as is called for. We can lead educational events in your community, we've worked with various libraries in the communities that we've worked with so far. And your residents can call us directly, me directly, if they choose to talk through their questions and gain a better understanding of the program. And then the last piece here is enrollment, right? Enrollment is really quite simple, and once a resident chooses to enroll, they go right to your municipality's landing page, they type in their zip code, their email, and it takes about five minutes, and they can reach out to us any step of the way for help or And just to kind of give you a sample of what this would look like, this is a landing page from the town of Boston that we have an active community campaign with. The language in blue here is language that we would come up with together, again, speaking directly to your residents, in language that makes sense for your community. And in this box on the left, we're just explaining here that Boston specifically chose for their donations to go to their walkability fund, so to install sidewalks in their town. Again, you choose where your donation money goes. And Ampean is a public benefit corporation, which means that giving back to the community is really important to us, and so instead of spending money advertising, you know, with these big corporations, what we really want to do is work with you and invest back in your community directly.
So, I'll speak a little, just to summarize, I'll speak a little to the actual terms in the program that people would be agreeing to. The key points for residents, you know, really are summed on the left-hand side here in terms of accessing utility bill savings at no cost to them. You are supporting in-state sustainability, these are local, as Karina said, mini power plants, you know, of solar panels that are being put up across the state. And residents are also supporting their municipality as well. So when they enroll, they'll get a $100 Visa gift card, but we will also provide a $100 donation to the fund or effort of your choice. And on the right-hand side are some of the actual terms of subscribing to a solar farm. I will state that because this is a New York State program with oversight from the Public Service Commission, there are really stringent restrictions and consumer protections around this program, which really boils down to a risk-free choice, and you know, that's from the state, we have to, you know, it's mandated by the utilities to comply, and then we really help execute on that, and really make everything work. So with that, you know, comes really favorable, what we would call terms, it is a five-year term, the solar farms are scheduled to produce electric credits or electricity, and therefore monetary credits for at least 20 years, but the term, at least the agreement, is five years, and will auto-renew. However, you can cancel and leave whenever, with, we request 90 days' notice, so three months. And again, there is no fee for signing up, you're just choosing to claim a portion of the solar farm, to receive the monetary credits and discount. Now, there's a slightly different term for commercial, non-residential entities, they're still welcome to join, but basically, depending on how much electricity a non-resident uses, will determine the amount of notice we request from said customers if they are to leave the solar farm. And we primarily are really excited to speak with everyone about the community campaign, and engaging your residents and the entire community, and really spreading the financial savings and benefits to everyone. We do want to make everyone aware though, that every municipal is eligible to join themselves too, for many of the same reasons and benefits that we've laid out. There are certainly added ones for every municipality, like the Clean Energy Community Grant Money that's offered for in the Clean Energy Upgrade Action Item. And without getting into specifics, we're happy to engage folks if they are interested in this, and often actually enhances campaign messaging if a municipal has also signed on, and that's typically how we will message and how we like to present this to communities. So we want to make sure that's an opportunity you guys are well aware of as well. I believe that is the end of what we wanted to present. We're hoping there's some time, we tried to go quickly, in the hopes of having time to answer any question you guys may have.
Yeah, we really pared down the slide deck. Again, there is a lot more here for you to review after the fact, I'll make sure that this gets circulated, but we didn't want to take up too much of your meeting time today, we wanted to really just kind of set the groundwork for understanding of this program, and propose that the next steps, right, are to really get in touch with us, so that we can start this conversation on an individual municipal level with those of you who are interested in learning more, or taking the next steps to participation.
Great, thank you. Does the board have any questions?
I have questions. Can they hear me?
Yes. Yeah.
Oh. Did you, I couldn't hear very well, but just to let you know, a lot of communities are already ending campaigns, and some have completed that, so with other solar companies. Did you say that, did you tell the audience that this is only for NYSAG customers, not the rural electric cooperative customers?
That's right.
Oh, you did?
That's right.
No, she did not.
Oh, she did not?
Right, it's not?
No, no, we did not mention that, but that's correct.
Another important factor with us, our municipal was...
Yeah, the municipal.
Do you get one light bill with NYSAG or two?
What's that?
Bill. What's that? She asked, she didn't hear you. Oh, she didn't hear me. I said, on the NYSAG electric bill, is this included into their bill, or is it a separate bill?
This is consolidated, so it's been a recent beneficial change that NYSAG now has utility consolidated, and solar, so it's all consolidated, right, not to NYSAG.
What'd she say? One bill and... When I say it's consolidated, that's important to me. Thank you. Thank you, that's all.
Yeah. You're welcome.
Okay, does the board have any other questions? Thank you very much for the presentation.
You're welcome, thank you for giving us the floor, I truly appreciate it.
Great.
Very much hope to connect with some of you after the fact. My contact info will be included in here, and also this will over to Kent to distribute.
Great, thank you. Okay, moving on, standing committee reports?
Thank you all.
We have any standing committee reports? Okay, we'll move on to resolutions. Okay, first resolution number 101.
I bring this resolution up and move for its adoption.
2021 Budget Amendment, receipt of COVID-19 ELC funds for reopening schools, grant funding, public health services.
Any questions?
How does this get distributed? Public health is going to be working with the school district, if the school district wants to do something, that's going to be up to me and the district.
So it's not like a pass-through grant, where we're giving them money?
Well, yeah, there'll be some sort of a program set up where they will, yes, that's exactly what it is.
Okay, please call the roll.
Gladstone?
Yes.
Mole?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Valente?
Yes.
Toddhill?
Yes.
Axtell?
Yes.
Taggart?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
ISO?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Hinkley?
Yes.
Kozier?
Yes.
Leighton?
Yes.
Setta?
Yes.
Okay, resolution 102.
I bring this one up and move for its adoption.
2021 Budget Amendment, receipt of additional COVID-19 enhanced detection grant funding, public health services.
Please call the roll.
Gladstone?
Yes.
Mole?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Valente?
Yes.
Toddhill?
Yes.
Axtell?
Yes.
Taggart?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
ISO?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Hinkley?
Yes.
Kozier?
Yes.
Leighton?
Yes.
Setta?
Yes.
Okay, resolution number 103.
I'll pull that up and move for its adoption.
2021 Budget Amendment, Summer Youth Employment Program, Department of Social Services.
Any questions? Please call the roll.
Gladstone?
Yes.
Mole?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Valente?
Yes.
Toddhill?
Yes.
Axtell?
Yes.
Taggart?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
ISO?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Hinkley?
Yes.
Kozier?
Yes.
Leighton?
Yes.
Setta?
Yes.
Resolution number 105.
I bring this up and move for its adoption.
2021 Budget Amendment, Transfer Funds to Economic Development.
Questions? Please call the roll.
Gladstone?
Yes.
Mole?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Valente?
Yes.
Toddhill?
Yes.
Axtell?
Yes.
Taggart?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
ISO?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Hinkley?
Yes.
Kozier?
Yes.
Leighton?
Yes.
Setta?
Yes.
Okay, resolution number 105.
I bring this up and move for its adoption.
2021 Budget Amendment, Transfer Funds to Economic Development.
Please call the roll.
Gladstone?
Yes.
Mole?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Valente?
Yes.
Toddhill?
Yes.
Axtell?
Yes.
Taggart?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
ISO?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Hinkley?
Yes.
Kozier?
Yes.
Leighton?
Yes.
Setta?
Yes.
Okay, resolution number 106.
I'd like to bring this up and move for its adoption.
2021 Budget Amendment, amend flood buyout, 2016 to 2018, as established by Resolution Number 89 of 2018, for the Governor's Office of Storm Recovery, Office of Housing and Urban Development, and Federal Emergency Management Agency, for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program for voluntary flood buyout in the village and town of Sidney, Planning Department.
Questions? Please call the roll.
Gladstone?
Yes.
Mole?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Valente?
Yes.
Toddhill?
Yes.
Axtell?
Yes.
Taggart?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
ISO?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Hinkley?
Yes.
Kozier?
Yes.
Leighton?
Yes.
Setta?
Yes.
Okay, resolution number 108.
Bring this up and move for its adoption.
Change Order Number 1 of Proposal Number 28 of 2021, General Building Construction Contract, Department of Public Works.
Okay, that's an increase, so please call the roll.
Gladstone?
Yes.
Mole?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Valente?
Yes.
Toddhill?
Yes.
Axtell?
Yes.
Taggart?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
ISO?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Hinkley?
Yes.
Kozier?
Yes.
Layton?
Yes.
Seta?
Yes.
Okay, resolution number 109.
Bring this up and move for its adoption.
Change order number two, proposal 34 of 2020, Delaware County Bridge Structural Steel Preservation Project, PIN 9754 dot 35, LD 040117, Department of Public Works.
Questions for Sue?
Decrease one by 81, decrease by 89. Eight to the good.
Okay, it's a decrease, so it's a voice vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? So carried. Resolution number 110.
Authorization to purchase a property for visitation parental education programs, Department of Social Services.
This was about a mile and a half of street for sale for like around $145, they were on the same $135. It was budgeted for $164, and I've got Sylvia here to explain more to this board what the house would be used for.
Yeah, basically, we need, we need a place, we have needed a place to have supervised visitation between foster children and their parents, and also some of our preventive cases. As you know, we have a lengthy period of cold weather here in Delaware County, and that makes finding a place that's safe and secure and conducive to actually helping parents learn how to be better parents, makes finding those places difficult. Plus, added into that is the virus concerns that we still have, and trying to find a more stable place to have these visits. We have about 86 cases right now, and by cases, I mean a case, not the number of children. There are more children than that that we work with and work with their parents to learn proper parenting techniques. And that runs the gamut of a newborn whose parents do not know how to care for a newborn. I think we've had four or five newborns come in in the past few months that several of them were addicted to drugs, and they're difficult to parent to begin with. They have reactions and difficulties in the beginning, and a lot of times, these parents really need a lot of education and a lot of one-on-one. That may surprise some of you, but it is true. It surprises me even now sometimes to the degree that they don't know how to care for an infant. They need our help, they need safe places. This house is in good shape. I had Pete Montgomery looked at it, my deputy commissioner went over, I looked at it. It's a good house, it's close, it's centrally located, and I think we can help these parents that we're working with get their children back faster because we'll have a program that's really focused and structured instead of trying to figure out what church basement to have a visitation or what McDonald's might be open, which has been a problem the last year and a half. We had people in cold weather meeting in parks at times. It's not conducive to helping. This is a house, so when the kids come in there, they're in a home. You know, it's a regular home, and that helps too because it's not some strange place, it's not scary, we can store things there so when they come back, things are there for them, and we keep getting kids into care. We have fortunately some getting adopted, going home, but we have about 50, we had three adoptions yesterday and another two coming up at the end of the week, so it's around 50 kids right now that we have in foster care, and I think we have something like 35 that are in direct placements, which although they're not in foster care, we have to provide the services to the family that we would if they were in foster care. So that's a lot of kids, that's a lot of families, and I have seen this program work when I worked briefly in the state of Florida as a foster care worker, and it was the atmosphere, the environment that helped make this seem more normal than trying to figure out where you could go in the middle of winter outside or go to McDonald's or something like that. So I'm hoping that you will be able to see the merit in this. If you have any questions, I'll answer them.
I find it funny you said McDonald's because when we went through the process of adopting our children, that's where we met with them, and we met with them every time.
Yeah.
Was McDonald's.
It makes it hard.
Every single time.
Yeah.
So I understand. You got no other facilities then?
No, nothing, nothing like this.
I witnessed these visitations taking part in a park. We got a little park in that. Witness, of course, the weather's bad.
It's tough to wear and call it on or go elsewhere.
Or it's rainy day like yesterday.
I know that our church hosts.
Well, churches have been very kind in helping us, but it's still, it's still a different type of facility, and I'm sure we still will at times use churches, especially with the virus still around, but this is a place to get the education in a home environment that isn't scary to the kids, that they can get used to it. And sometimes we have parents who get upset during the visit, so we have to stop a visit, and sometimes that causes some.
Sylvia, will there be recording devices and stuff in this house?
Yes, I want, want to do that to, to be able to record sessions and be able to play that back to the parents because a lot of times when you say, we're doing this, and maybe you should try maybe this or this might work better, they say to you, I'm not doing that. And they believe it, they believe it, but if you show them that they are doing that, it has an impact on them. They don't even realize that, you know? If I took a picture of all of you in 24 hours and played it back to you, you'd probably be surprised at all the things you do. You know, it's just the way it is. We're in the moment.
How many, how many foster families will go through the home in an annual basis?
Well, I'd say.
And how long are their visits?
Well, it depends. I mean, they could be two hours, they could be four hours. We try to get them to a point where they can start having these visits in their own home, but for more, some of the difficult cases, unfortunately, that never happens, and the children will end up being adopted at some point in time. It's a struggle. It's just a struggle.
You know, I just, worthy cause, but I just, we just looked at a figure that town in the village of Sydney took 129 properties off the tax rolls, which includes county taxes. To take another one off the tax rolls is just, it, it's got a, it's eating at me, and, you know, especially in a town, in a village of Delhi, where, how many times have we heard that Delhi has been strapped for non-taxable properties? I, I think we should explore other options. I'm just, there's no cost on yearly O and M in this resolution.
Part of the 164,000 that we budgeted, 135, which we didn't know at the time, would be for the house and then other items between the 135 and the 160,000. I mean, we have to have a cleaning person come in once in a while, and what other expenses we have, the difference, which we're gonna have anyway. So, but I'm telling you right now, we need this house. We're lucky to have it, because every one of you know that there's very little out there on the market for sale. It's not a big house, and it just suits our needs, that's all.
I would like to make a comment.
Sylvia, would this, would one family win their, could win their more than one time?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
They could, they could visit it many, many times.
Right, and the other thing is, I understand your concern about the tax base. I live in Delhi. I pay my taxes every year. I know the taxes on this house have been $3,500 a year because the landlord, the owner shared that with me. It's also centrally located. We have our staff here. Delaware Opportunities participates in this, they're not far away. There is going to be a savings there in the way we spend our money to make this happen. I do hear you, but I think having a centrally located house, one that's a house, that's what made it hard. And I thought, you know, I, I thought it would be hard to find, but I lucked out because I talked to someone on our staff who knows everybody, and I said, do you know of any properties? And this one came up, and it looks good and checks out. So I do hear what you're saying, but I live in Delhi and I pay taxes. If I have to pay a little bit more in taxes to make this happen, fine. It, it's important to our community, and by that I mean Delaware County, not just Delhi.
I would like to make a comment on the house. I drive past it every day year-round. My biggest concern there isn't the program. I like the idea of the program. I've seen multiple cars come sliding down out of that driveway or stuck in the driveway, and when they plow snow in the winter, the snowbanks eat up most all of the parking up there, and there's absolutely no parking on Meredith Street. I just, I'm just afraid we're not going to have room for the cars that are going to be going in and out of there. That's my biggest concern.
Why do they park five cars up in there?
Not during the winter.
I claimed I could.
She claimed she could. We don't all drive smart cars.
No, I think there'll have to be.
In the winter, because you can't plow snow out into Route 28.
There'll have to be a little work done, but once you get up on the property, you could easily park three cars in, in the property park on the right.
They know, they got to work on that.
And there's some work we could eventually do on the bank. I, there would have to be, I think, a snow blower there. I live up on a mountain, so I'm kind of familiar with how narrow the road gets in the winter, believe me. So it is a consideration, but one that will, one that I think we can manage.
Okay.
Jeff?
Yes, Joe, I understand that, which I appreciate, but the 100 parcels in Sydney were FEMA parcels, which were, you know, this has no comparison, I'm sorry. You know, it does take tax money off, and that's what we spoke about, we did discuss that earlier. But, you know, the FEMA being that, and you've got five parcels, I believe, in your town, in your village, you know, are an issue too. But, you know, I, this, I'm on the committee, I have mixed feelings about it. You know, I think there's probably a need for it, I'm not saying there isn't, but I also, I'm probably a little hardcore that we, we assist these people to no end, and in some return, there's no doubt, there's some that benefit from it and everything, but our system is broke. We need to make people change, not just ask them to change. And that's my opinion on that. But on this house, I think overall, it's not a bad thing. Our committee had quite an discussion about it, there was no doubt about that, and I was the one that was biggest right there. And there is a need for it, there's no doubt. It seems that it's a good buy in today's real estate market. I don't think, I think that's the bottom line. It does take land off the tax roll, which is unfortunate at any time, time it happens. But I have reservations about the whole plan, and I guess that's all, you know, there's, there's been, yeah, I guess enough said.
My other concern, I think we need to look at this also as far as maintenance conditions or issues for our maintenance departments. Another property managed, another driveway plowed, another sidewalk snowplow, it's another man to spend two hours up there at that building and do what they've got to do. Our, our building and maintenance crew is really shorthanded, so I really want, as we start adding this, and we add on a mental health facility, we add on more facilities, let's remember we're adding more square feet for a limited number of people we have taking care of our buildings. So as we add this, I'm not saying it's a bad idea to add, I'm just saying that we need to also add services to support these buildings too, people. And that, that's one of the things that we're seeing with shared service. We're short on people to maintain our, our buildings already. We see it in planning, we're short on people to mow our lawns and take care of the property that we have under flood planning. So it, as we grow, also our services grow too, so we've got to put those numbers, and the 33K that's left over out of the buck 68 certainly goes toward that, I hope.
Amy?
Just to add a, a small legal piece to this, my office, representing the Department of Social Services, we have to go to the court, and we have to show the court that these children that are in foster care and these families that are requiring services, that the department is doing what they have to do to try to reunite these families. If, and they're called reasonable efforts, okay? And one of those things is mandatory visits. There's, we call it the mandatory minimum, so it's two hours every other week, but a lot of families get way more than that. And we are getting increasing pushback from the court about efforts that the county and the Department of Social Services is putting forth. If the court doesn't make those findings that we're making reasonable, taking reasonable efforts to reunite these families, then you lose that piece of funding from the state. So this house goes a very long way to help satisfy that burden because it is becoming increasingly hard to find public places to have these, to have these visits. Since COVID, places are just telling us no, anyway. So it's very hard to find places, appropriate places to have these visits, and these are things that are required under the law that we will in the end be reimbursed for through the state and the feds. So this, there is a legal component to this.
I, I want to, I look at this like I do all of these social programs. They're an investment in our children, and that's our future, and that's who we have to take care of, whatever it takes. That's what we need to do.
I guess the point is, if we can, like Amy says, if we can reunite one family.
That's right.
You're doing a hell of a lot for that family, and number two, you're saving a tax dollar.
Absolutely.
Just one family, and that's the objective of this house, is to do that.
Are there any other questions or comments?
And Pete, Pete Montgomery and Dale Donan has looked at this house and said it's a good house. It's not a big house, it's not a pretty house, but it's a good house.
Chris, please call the roll.
Gladstone?
Yes.
Mole?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Valente?
Yes.
Tuthill?
I like the concept, but I don't think it's the right place, no.
So, is that yes or no?
No.
Go or no?
No.
No.
I just don't think that's the place.
Axtell?
Yes.
Taggart?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yeah.
Vernal?
Yes.
Isel?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Hinckley?
Yes.
Kosher?
Yes.
Layton?
Yes.
Seta?
Go. Oh, no, and it'll make you feel better. Well, I, I really liked all the comments, and just my gut feeling is, I haven't seen the property, but I'm still, I, I think other options would be available, so I'm gonna vote no. I'm telling you, there's not many options out there.
Okay, moving on to resolution number 111.
I bring resolution 111 to the floor, ask for its approval.
Carryover of extra vacation time for department heads from 2020 to 2021, personnel office.
Questions? This is a voice vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution number 112.
In memory of Eugene Pigford, whereas God in his infinite wisdom has seen fit to remove from our presence and fellowship Supervisor Eugene Pigford, and whereas Mr. Pigford served with distinction as supervisor of the Town of Sydney from January the 1st, 2014, until his untimely passing on June the 6th, 2021, and whereas he will be remembered for his dedication, community service, and hard work. Now therefore be it resolved that the Delaware County Board of Supervisors extends its sympathy to the family of Eugene Pigford and recognizes with gratitude his contributions to this county, his town, and neighbors.
I just wanna say that, you know, I've known Gene since the early eighties, and that's when we worked together to put electric into his camp on Sunshine Mountain in the Town of Sydney. He still has that camp today. As a matter of fact, he and some of the family were staying there, uh, during his calling hours in the funeral. But Gene was a, he was a gentle, kind, and caring individual that loved his family, loved his community, and most of all, he loved his Lord and Savior. He truly did. He left the area, as you know, many times he wasn't here, but he left the area to go work with the Salvation Army to areas of disaster and special needs. And, uh, but that's what he did, that's the type of person he was. Even, it strikes me, even in his deteriorating health, he dealt with zoning issues in his town. I read it in the paper, it was a big deal. People were both sides, but he was dealing with that. I believe it was the night of his calling hours, the deputy supervisor, Eric Wilson, I'm sure he told me that that night they were having a board meeting to decide, make a final decision on that zoning. So, that's how our law had progressed, and, uh, Gene worked very hard at it. I remember him saying, in a quote, at one point, he said, "We care about our community and we want what's best for it." But that sounds just like him. Gene and I were on four departmental committees together, OFA, DSS, Public Health, and Mental Health, heads, Art and Joe and Betty. And, uh, so we did a lot of working together when he could make it. And he'll truly be missed, and hopefully we're better people for knowing him. He's in good hands now, and I'm sure he's offering his kindness and carrying himself to the Lord. He would end saying to us all, "God bless." You know that in every email you got, and ended with, "God bless." And now we're here to say, "God bless you, Gene." So, uh, I really will miss him personally, but, uh, he was a good man and good for our world. That's all.
Any other comments? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. We have one not prefiled. I'll waive rule 10 without objection. Resolution number 113.
I bring that up, move for its adoption.
Second.
Payment of audit.
Please call the rule.
Gladstone?
Yes.
Mole?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Valente?
Yes.
Tuthill?
Yes.
Axtell?
Yes.
Taggart?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Isel? Haynes? Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Davis? Hinckleys?
Yes.
Kosher?
Yes.
Layton?
Yes.
Seta?
Yes.
I'd like to add that Amy just, um, mentioned to me, she received information from Mandy Walsh, that the governor will cancel the New York State Declaration of Emergency tomorrow, 6.
It will be lifted tomorrow.
Lifted tomorrow, 6:24.
Sylvia, does that mean appointment training, we can go back to work?
It's starting to talk about it.
And I also would like to say, the next meeting at the end of July, it's not for another month, we will no longer be zooming. We will return back to normal.
What's normal?
Mr. Marshfield, you had something you wanted to say?
I just wanted to address the board. Our Public Health Committee met, I guess last week. And, uh, I'm telling you right now, our Public Health Department is highly stressed for various reasons. Delaware County currently has, and Joe, I know is wild about it, but Delaware County currently has the highest number of positive COVID cases in the 17 county capital region. In our last county public health report, the one, I'm talking about the ones that you send all the, everybody, we had 11 cases, positive cases, and they range, and Mandy says that they range from 35 to 50 years old. And she said they are all very, very sick cases. And we have a doctor that is present at our advisory board meeting, and he concurs as well that the cases today are much more sick than they have been in the past. neighboring Atsibo County during the same time period only had two cases. But their vaccination rate is 53 to 54 percent. Delaware County's vaccination rate is 45 percent. Some parts of our county are at 130 percent. Tell you a story. Recently, we had an out-of-county, unvaccinated person came into the county to visit one of our unvaccinated families. Both parents and the child became infected. One parent has passed away, and the other parent is very ill today, as is their child. Mandy wants to remind everybody that the variants are here, they're working. My point about all this is, we as leaders of our communities need to encourage our residents to get vaccinated. And those that not wish to get vaccinated, that's fine, but they must wear their masks and social distance. Continue doing that. To continue the way we are, it's putting a tremendous strain on our Public Health Department. They've been working their ass off for a year now, nonstop, and it's, and it isn't letting up because people aren't getting vaccinated. Say nothing about the financial cost to our taxpayers. So, we need, we need as leaders to encourage our communities to at least contact our Public Health Department and talk with them, schedule a vaccination, listen to them, if they got time to talk to you. But I'm, I'm telling you, we need to do something different in this county than what's going on right now, because it's not working, and it's still bad. And it's, it's, uh, for our residents and our taxpayers, we need to encourage more vaccinations. And, and Delaware County, I googled that myself, statewide, is in the bottom 20 percent of all the 62 counties in the state, worth the bottom 20 percent.
I actually did a public service announcement, put it on social media yesterday, and emphasized those exact points from that document that Mandy sent, and got a number of likes, I guess. So, um, yeah, and I wanna echo what Wayne says. We, we need to, we need to get it out, state it at your board meetings or however you can get it out to your communities. It's vitally important.
When she, when she gave us those figures, I think both Wayne and I almost fell off our chairs. It was, it did go over very well. I'm thinking we were at like 65 percent, but it was disappointing.
The highest counties in the state are at 67 percent.
Yeah.
That's the highest. And that's, that's pretty high. But our public, our public health department, Art, is not big. It's not a big department. And they, I mean, we, for the last year, we, uh, they've given us their reports late. We had to reschedule meetings. They're just, they're just lashed out over this COVID thing, and it's still bad, and we need it to get better.
Yeah, they, they are strapped, Mandy and her team is stressed. She just gave us the reports from last year, because she hadn't had time to do them. It's like, you know, and we're halfway through this year, so.
She called me last Friday evening, and she was extremely stressed and tired. She said it was worse now for her and her department than it was at the height of last year. And they've been going since February of 2020, and we're almost into July.
They still have to do all this contact tracing, all that's gotta be done.
And the county, and the state is starting to cut back on how much they're helping the county. So, when the state was helping doing the contact tracing, that was a big hand help. But now they're starting to pull back on all of that assistance, and so it's gonna be, right? So, it's all in the local public health.
The variants that are here are, like Wayne said, are extremely, um, I don't know if it's toxic.
Very.
They're more severe.
Yeah, more severe. However, the vaccines do work on them, and I kinda stress that too, so.
So, in terms of the vaccines, if people are hesitant, have them talk to their primary care provider. Massa has it available in all the school-based health centers at all the primary care locations. I would assume UHS has the same kind of avenue. The pharmacies like Walgreens, Fox Pharmacy, I mean, they all have the vaccine now, and they're all able to do it on demand. So, along with their vaccinated people on the lawn up here.
Yeah.
It's there, it's available, Johnson &amp; Johnson's available, it's one dose you're done. The side effects are minimal, and most of us in this room have had it. It's no worse than getting a flu shot, or anything. And the peace of mind that it brings to ourselves and our families and communities are well worth it.
What that Public Health has right now, a tent down the street on Old Store, now it might be.
No.
With Johnson &amp; Johnson, they're giving shots. If anybody wants to walk off the street and get a shot, it's right there.
Get your shot.
That's all, that's all I want.
No, excellent point.
Okay, does the board have any other business for today?
I just have one thing on you real quick. Uh, the stretch code has been coming out to a lot of municipalities, especially municipalities that have renewable energy projects.
What do you think about that?
Well, here's the deal, just so you know, I talked to Kevin Young a couple days ago, and he called me over something in the school, and he wanted to talk to me about this, because he told me he really doesn't understand it. It's turned into a big deal, and no one really knows the answers. And then Shelley had spoken to me last month, when I seen her, about the same thing, and asked, you know, if we could look into it. So, my code enforcement officer, Hyrum Davis, sat down and went through it, and I worked through it with him. And I guess there's a couple things that you guys really should know before you go further with this. And I'll try it as fast as I can. 2009, 2010, New York State Energy Research Development Agency, NISERDA, took $104 million from the federal government and guaranteed that New York State would adopt an energy code. The way they did that is they went to Albany, and they gave the Department of State the money to purchase all of the COVID books for all of the municipalities in the state, because the governor took that funding out of the budget the year before. The Department of State adopted an energy code in 2010, and then the following code, they adopted the ICC, which is the International COVID Council's code for the entire United States of America. New York State had never really done that before, because the ICC doesn't really apply really good in the Northeast, because of all of our snow loads and wind loads, excessive storms and stuff, and the cold weather. It only lasted for five years. The state got rid of it, the Department of State has gone back to the New York State Building Code, and that's the code we've been working with for the last three or four years now. And they got another rotation coming up, and they're gonna adopt another code. It's not the ICC. The Department of State is not adopting the ICC anymore. I know a lot of the people that work at the Department of State, the way this happened back 2010, was Sam Repoudas, second in charge, retired and went through the ICC for it. And that's how we ended up getting that connection and bringing it together. Now, we have another fund of money going in, but what NISERDA has done this time is they've accepted money from the federal government, but they've already learned the ropes, and they understand what home rule means. And New York State is the last home rule state in the United States of America. And what that means is you don't have to go to Albany or the Department of State to get it adopted. Municipalities have the right to adopt additional rules. So, what NISERDA is doing is they're coming to towns and they're saying, "You guys adopt it," because they know that the New York State Department of State will not. Okay, why is the question? Two things that are going on right now. If you have an energy grant, if you have a solar project like we do in the town of Middletown, they will guarantee you a $5,000 grant if you agree to adopt it. Now, here's where the problem is. We had a big presentation a couple weeks ago at our meeting, and my code enforcement officer came, and he got it all done. And my code enforcement officer started asking questions, and the poor guy couldn't answer any of them, said, "Listen, I'm sorry, you're probably right." Let me explain a couple of the really bad parts.
Who is that guy from Tatum?
I think so, and Brian Sweeney would have the information, and I'm gonna go help set that up. You got a couple real bad issues. In New York State, all authority comes from the Department of State, the Secretary of State, that is appointed by the governor of the state every year, and that authority is handed down to state police officers, code for all officers, period. Sheriff's don't come from being elected in county, no worries. Right now, the entire stretch code is based off of the ICC. It is not based off the, the New York State Building Code. So, you're going to, if you're a municipality that adopts the stretch code, New York State did not adopt the ICC, and the stretch code is a subsidy of it. So, you can adopt this subsidy all right, all day long, but the ICC's not law anymore, guys. So, you have, you can't adopt an appendix of a law without adopting a law, understand? So, if you, New York State has not adopted the ICC, the entire stretch code is an appendices of the ICC. It's based on nothing. You have nothing to come back on, you have no enforcement authority on it whatsoever. Now, I just did a breakdown of section three of the stretch code, and I gave it to Shelley, highlighted, and I went through it before this meeting. I spent about an hour with her, and I told her, "Sit down with Kevin, go through this, and if they have questions, me and Hyrum will sit down and we'll go further through this." There's another real bad problem. If you read the stretch code, and they talk about it, at the end, they talk about inspections. Every inspection for everything in the stretch code, they have set up to be done by an outside agency. You're not allowed to do that in New York State. The way New York State is set up is the Department of The way New York State is set up is the Department of State certifies you as code enforcement officer, and then the town appoints you as the code enforcement officer with certification from the state. That's what gives you enforcement authority, period. You do not have the right to let outside agencies that are not certified by the state come in and conduct inspections. You can, there's a loophole. Your code enforcement officer can say, "Yes, I sign off it," just like we do with electrical inspectors. Okay, but there's a difference, they're certified in state, and they have work with town hall nine yards. With the stretch code, it doesn't say that. It says that an approved agency will come in and do the inspections and guarantee the methods and all the components. There are five sections in Part 3, and it's only an eight-page document. There's five seconds where it's sections where it says outside agencies that are familiar with these systems will come and approve and do the inspections. You don't have to leave her up to that. And if you do, your code enforcement officer is essentially saying, "Well, if you say it's okay, then I guess it is, and I'm going to take your word for it." The problem is, is that you're liable for this. And at the end of the day, if you try fixing it, you can't, because it's based on the ICC that's not adopted in the state. This is an ass-backwards way of doing this.
What NYSERTA's given communities, 1,200 points, or whatever it is, to adopt the stretch code.
So what I say is, and I'm, I'm trying to be nice here, anytime someone has to pay you to adopt the rule, you should be careful of it. And if there's anyone in this room that needs to remember the lesson, maybe what we ought to think about is the million dollars Good Neighbor money that New York City EEP gave to each of our towns to adopt those rules and regulations back in 1996. And when Kevin brought up the fact, he asked me about this, and I told him, you know, research is coming, Middletown, we've got a solar project, and I'm like, "Well, what gives them the right to bribe you to adopt these rules?" I said, "I know, it's like they learned the shit from New York City." So my point is, is that you guys need to be careful what's going on, and you've really got to ask the right questions. The big one you got to ask is.
This third-party vendor told me that this stretch code is going to be state law in about two years, but Gordon, what you're saying?
Yeah, it's not, because what's happened is, what's going to happen is, next year we have a rotation in front of state, every five years we adopt a new code. It takes one year to get the books produced from the Code Council and get them in the municipality, so you do need to report years and get two more years. There, if, if the Department of State was going to adopt it, why aren't they coming? They don't need to come to you, there's only 15 people on the New York State Code Council office. I go sit in front of them, I present, and they make part of the code in the next rotation. They don't need to go to every town and exhaust all these resources and all this time to do this one thousand times. They're doing it because it's not going through the Department of State. And that's the part that everyone needs to know. So just be a little careful with it, guys. Understand that we probably ought to read it, and I know, with all due respect, there's a lot of code enforcement officers that just aren't doing their job. They're not certified, we're not doing fire inspections in the county, we're not doing the job. And, and we've been trying to for a long time in Middletown, and we work full-time, and we barely stay on top of it. But I guess if you're not enforcing the code anyways, it really doesn't matter in one aspect, but the other aspect of it is that I'm not telling you is that if you do a renovation or addition of over $60,000, and you adopt the stretch code, or you get a permit for a new house today, you're looking at about $7,000 to $12,000 increase for every permit. And you're going to get $5,000 in maintenance. Which, you know, I'm pushing a $3 million budget, Middletown, and $5,000 really ain't going to do it. So be a little careful with it. I, I, I think there's a lot of things being said to kind of push that, but realize that this thing's based off the ICC, and we don't do that anymore at the Department of State. And the way this is being done, so that's all I have, I just wanted to.
Thanks, Pat, that was great.
Does the board have any other business? Okay, enjoy the next month, meeting adjourned.